We've got to begin our regular meeting of the City of South Fulton. Mr. Mayor, you can stand with your roll call.
Mayor Williamville Edwards?
Here.
Mayor Prochairman Catherine Ralph?
Here.
Councilmember Carmen Lebedus?
Here.
Councilmember Helen Z. Willis?
Here.
Councilmember Naima Gilyar?
Here.
Councilmember Rosie Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Ali. And Councilmember Mark Baker.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Okay, I would like the City Chapel to come up and give the application.
Let us all stand. Let us pray. Dear gracious God, we come with an attitude of gratitude. We're thankful for the progress of our city. And we thank you for the wisdom and knowledge in which you have poured upon our mayor and council, and also the wisdom of everyone that's here. Continue, oh God, to catapult us into the future. Continue to pour all that we need, continue to protect us from danger and from evil forces without of our city. And those that are within, we claim it right now that they are pushed out. For your eyes are on this city, so is the world. So may you be glorified in all that is done tonight as it is done for the good of those on tomorrow. This we pray. Let us all say amen.
Amen.
Glad allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the civil with liberty and justice for all.
Earlier today, we did, we had some conversation about the consent agenda. Mr. Mayor, can you kind of go over those items that were put into the consent agenda for approval?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. During today's work session at five o'clock PM, council voted to move several items on today's printed agenda to the consent agenda. These items are to be considered routine by the city council and voted upon with one motion, beginning on page two of today's agenda. The first item was a resolution imposing an additional ninety day zoning moratorium on all zoning applications for property within. The conversation during work, during the work session was to make sure that that ninety day extension was up to ninety days. Additionally, under section B, under ordinances, for second reading, there were several items that were moved to the consent agenda. Roman numeral one, under letter B. This is the city charter resolution ordinance twenty seventeen dash zero zero one. Also, roman numeral two with two amendments. That was approval of the ordinance adopting a code of ordinances for the city of South Fulton. Roman numeral three. After that motion was voted on for approval, we did, we neglected to move it to consent. So this item, roman numeral three, stays on the regular meeting agenda and still requires a vote. Roman numeral, and that is for operational ordinances governing city council meetings. Under roman numeral four, that item was held. Adoption of an ordinance establishing the planning commission for the city of South Fulton. Roman numeral five was moved to consent agenda. And that's an ordinance establishing the zoning board of appeals for the city of South Fulton. Roman numeral six. Adoption of an ordinance establishing the board of code enforcement for the city of South Fulton was also moved to the consent agenda. Roman numeral seven was moved to the consent agenda. This is adoption of an ordinance establishing building regulations. And then for first reading, under roman numeral three, this item was just presented during the work session, so it will also be presented during today's regular meeting. I have a couple changes to the, okay, I'm starting on page three, under section three, other action items. There was a motion to approve the employee holiday calendar. And that was approved and moved to the consent agenda. I have to announce, and we can do that, some changes to the board appointments, but I'll announce those when we get to those items. I'm trying to see if that's all we got. Okay, the last item, which was introduced under other new business, was a budgetary controls resolution sponsored by councilmember Baker. That item was moved to the consent agenda and it was for approval as well.
Also, we're also asking for a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, twenty seventh. Yes, sir. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes from Tuesday to June twenty seventh.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as well as an amendment.
June twenty seventh.
June twenty seventh.
Probably move the second in discussion.
Yes. I would like to make a motion to, uh, move the hiring update to executive session.
You have a motion on the floor. Not Jermaine, to the, to the motion on the floor. Just move the motion on the floor, then we'll come back to you.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any discussion? All those who favor I?
Aye.
Oppose? That passes, your adversary.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to move the hiring personnel decisions to executive session, to executive session.
Second.
Probably move the second in discussion. All those who favor I? Oppose? That passes. I would entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda meetings.
Just the regular agenda, sir.
Just the regular agenda?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
Probably move the second in discussion.
I have an addition of my appointment to the planning commission. I sent me on Saturday and Sunday and it wasn't even time to be added to the agenda. I want to add it to the agenda.
And I'm glad, thank you for doing, I mentioned it earlier when I was sounding the consent, but there are a couple board appointments that are affecting today's agenda. As councilmember Gilyar just mentioned, she's nominating Janay, or Janai? Janay C. Walters to the planning permission. I also have an amendment to councilmember Jackson's appointment to the zoning board of appeals. She's replacing what's on the printed agenda. She's appointing Ms. Amethyst Harris instead. And then, okay, that's it for the board.
Mr. Mayor, can we not handle that at that point in the agenda? We can handle that at that point in the agenda.
Normally, there are a little more.
Probably move the second in discussion. Hearing none? All those who favor I?
Aye.
Those who oppose? That, that's approved. Uh, we have some, we have some proclamations and recognition by Councilwoman Gilyar.
Everyone, I would like for you to meet Patrick Muhammad. Patrick has an approximate thirty acre farm in our community. It just so happens to be in my district. And he raises grain-fed beef and goats and land. And grass-fed. He said grass-fed. And not only that, he has vegetables as well. And so, I want to read this proclamation for Mr. Muhammad and his family. Whereas Patrick S. Muhammad and his family reside on a thirty acre farm called Your Faith Farms in the city of South Fulton off Jones Road. The Muhammad family is one of the largest African-American landowners in South Fulton. And whereas the Mohammads have been residents of South Fulton for the past ten years and they stepped down on faith to purchase a farm and haven't looked back. It's real work, but they enjoy every minute of it. That's his quote. Uh, for almost forty years, they have raised grass-fed beef, free-range chickens, and a five acre vegetable and fruit garden. And whereas during the spring of twenty fifteen, Your Faith Farms collaborated with the local youth soccer league, Amazon Sports, to use the pasture, uh, pastures as a temporary soccer field to allow energetic young ages three to eighteen to play soccer. Whereas Your Faith Farms is now in high gear, approaching the first growing season of twenty seventeen. With knowledge that the key to a plentiful harvest is the proper preparation for your seedlings, Your Faith Farms is raising some five thousand seedlings of various plants and installing their first hoop house or wind tunnel for years-long growing, thereby increasing the local production of vegetables by forty percent this season. Now, therefore, being resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of South Fulton congratulate Patrick and Ishtar Muhammad and Your Faith Farms and you hereby proclaim Tuesday, July seventeen, uh, July eleventh, twenty seventeen, as Patrick and Ishtar Muhammad and Your Faith Farms Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton. So you're gonna hear a lot from Patrick and a group of, he's not the only farmer that we have. So you're not, you're gonna hear a lot from them in the weeks and months to come. So thank you so very much.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It is indeed a great honor to have the opportunity to be acknowledged for just trying to do right. Uh, my family stepped out on faith. I'm a former principal, uh, right here in the metro area, and I decided I couldn't leave my family of principal partners by. I know I can leave them thirty acres in a mule. And we'll give the other ten acres later on. So I just an honor to be part of this new city. It was a conversation for years and now it's reality. And I just want to do my part to support each and every one of us to make South Fulton the best place for us to live. Thank you.
And I just found out, um, today, or even yesterday, that Patrick used to live in my neighborhood and I didn't even know him, right down the street from me. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd just like to make a personal privilege to allow House President to District Fifty-two and voting.
You don't need that, you're all right.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, do you want him to speak first?
He can speak first. Mr. Boardy, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is an absolute honor to be here. This is my first time actually getting the opportunity to address you, Mr. Mayor, and also my friends in the city council. Uh, I'm just very proud of, of all the hard work you all are doing. Uh, we really appreciate it. It resonates not only in the city of South Fulton, but I represent East Point College Park, Union City, Douglasville. So everybody's standing up for good things. Uh, keep going forward. Uh, the city of South Fulton, the House delegation, uh, looks forward to working with you all in the future. We've got a lot of things coming up next session. Uh, some things that's gonna be dealing with the city of South Fulton directly and indirectly. So we want to make sure we stay in constant contact. But thank you all again. I appreciate what Councilwoman Helen Willis is doing with us. We have a meeting tomorrow dealing with Camp Creek and some of the fatalities and incidents that we're having on Camp Creek. So we're gonna be meeting with G-Dot because we need to address that issue and attack that issue head-on so we can make sure our citizens are safe and our constituents are safe. So thank you all for allowing me to speak here today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we received eleven speakers. Uh, the first three speakers are Ms. Deborah Pearson, Mr. Donald Heineman, and Mr. Marcus Coleman. If you could all please approach the podium.
Uh, good evening. I'm Dr. Deborah Pearson. I am a retired thirty-year classroom educator from the Atlanta Public School System. And I have lived in what was once unincorporated South Fulton County since nineteen eighty-nine. With great respect and appreciation, I welcome the mayor, Mr. Bill Efforts, and all of the newly elected officials to our new municipality, the city of South Fulton. My purpose for speaking today is to bring awareness to the need for a residential tree ordinance in the city of South Fulton County. There is an ordinance for tree preservation that governs, uh, business and developers. However, no such tree protection governs the removal of trees from private residences. I live in a wooded community. And each year, dozens of my neighbors are removing valuable tree canopy. Typically, tree cutters target residents in South Fulton County, invoke fear about the dangers of trees, and remove trees for profit because they cannot arbitrarily and randomly remove trees on residential properties in Atlanta and Decatur. Atlanta and Decatur protect their trees with ordinances and tree commissions. My community has lost significant tree canopy in the last five years due to the aggressive nature of some of these tree companies. There is a reason for tree protection in Atlanta and Decatur. Trees have value and should be considered a community resource like clean air and clean water. The necessary relationship between human existence and trees is grounded in science. Was that mine?
Yeah, we did that.
Okay, so thank you. And I hope that this is the beginning of the consideration that we consider a residential tree ordinance. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, I didn't know I was speaking, but actually I got here. But I'm, my name's Donald Heineman. I'm from the Five Community, Willows, and the Seventh District. We have a problem that started down there some five, six weeks ago with C S X. They have a train that comes through there and stops, blocks all the crossings, which puts five crossings. And it sits there from one hour to four hours at a time. Not one time a day, but two times a day. Now, we have seen analysts turn around, which then fire crews turn around, which then police cars have to turn around. And heads coach, the union city go around, which is time-consuming for them. My concern is the elderly that live in the community. If they have a medical problem and that train is stopped, time is critical. And it, it's going, I'm afraid, somewhere along the line, it's gonna cause serious problems for the elderly. And we have, Mr. Baker has, uh, we have in contact with him and he has contacted with CSX, such as I, I have P M, P Melvin, too. And they said they were turned over to their attorneys and see what can be done. But the train is some four miles long when it stops and it shuts down the community. But it's not just the Five Community. Hundreds of cars travel that road. Mr. Baker got stopped by the other night, him and his family, and sat there and had to turn around. So it's, it's not just the Five Community, but it's everybody that comes, uses the highway. And I'm just hoping that the council can come up with something and, and help us or see if we can resolve this in some matter. Now, thank you for your-
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Mr. Mayor, I would direct this to you because I believe you know the family that I'm getting ready to speak about today. Down on the south side of South Fulton, people's hearts are very heavy. We lost an extreme giant in the form of an angel by the name of Nikki Bolden just last night, very tragically. Nikki Bolden and her family, as you know, Mr. Mayor, have been a multiple business owner, ranging up and down on national from the districts of six and five. Uh, but I, I came here to tell you what Nikki Bolden and her family were doing prior to her death yesterday. Little League sponsorship, gang unity rallies at their various places of business, bookbag giveaways, buy these, in particular, these particular gangs, Bloods, Genies, Crips. It's not easy to get that group together. An initiative that started last year with myself, Nikki Bolden, and former candidate Tori Thomason called Take Back Old National, that is an initiative to stop the violence, which was sparked by the three I just named. Uh, Ms. Bolden's places of business were more like a congregating place or a planning place for some of the hands-on dirty work that doesn't get broadcasted over the tube, but is being put in on a daily basis. So, Mr. Mayor and council, I'm coming to you because no one else had the, I guess, the strength at this point in time to come do this political address because they're mourning her death. There is, uh, an initiative called Old National Day that takes place the day before Labor Day every year. This is its third year running. Last year, it reached over five hundred occupants. What we are asking is that this mayor and council consider declaring the day before, uh, Labor Day, Nikki Bolden slash old on that day. We already know that black women don't get honored enough as it is. We know that this body is predominantly made up of black women. We know that now on that south side of town, that there is a problem going on with crime. Well, if you highlight one of the concrete, uh, roses that grew out of the concrete from that area, which is Ms. Bolden, make that day about her day. It would help to bring about a proactive change in mindset on government and community. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Ms. Wanda Ibi Dapo, Ms. Denise Hamm, and Mr. Kevin Marquez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilwomen and councilmen. My name is Wanda Ibi Dapo and I'm a citizen and resident of District Two. And, uh, I live less than a half a mile from the Fulton County firing range, which is the range that the, um, police and such use for practice. From my understanding, um, there are no hours that have been officially approved by Fulton County for that range to be used. I think there's a, a soft understanding that the hours are from six AM to ten PM, Monday through Saturday. And I don't, and I'm pretty, I received notification, uh, that Fulton County has not approved those hours. And it's very disturbing to the community, especially within that area. We hear rapid fire quite a bit. Um, that firing range has been there, from my understanding, for over thirty years. Well, thirty years ago, Wellesley subdivision wasn't there, Oxmore Estates wasn't there, Wellesley Estates, I wasn't there, et cetera, et cetera. And now that community has totally changed. We have children in the area and we constantly hear it. So my ask of the council and of the mayor is if you could, um, look into regulating some type of hours that, uh, would be conducive to the community, um, that's there so that they're not disturbed. Also, that firing range, although it's called Fulton County firing range, it's used by lots of, of other officials. Uh, North County, North Fulton comes down. I've seen Hyrum, I've seen, um, Dooley County. I've seen all kinds of police and county using that facility, and I don't think it's fair. So I'm asking if you can do something about it. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor and council, uh, my name is Denise Hamm, eighty-one ninety Ridge Road. After we became a city, there were fourteen committees. And we were asked to compile information, suggestions, recommendations, uh, to each committee. For example, I'm on the committee of Fire EMS. My question is, what is the status of you all hearing the white paper? My group, a dedicated group, got together and we spent long, tireless, tirelessly hours working on this paper. When will you guys get an opportunity to hear the recommendations that we have? Lastly, we have a trash problem. On Jones Road off of Cedar Grove and South Fulton Parkway, there are people dumping trash by the truckloads. I do want to say thank you for having signs erected, you know, saying that you're under surveillance. However, because we are a new city, and I know the money has not come in yet, we have an opportunity to generate revenue once we get those signs put in place and target the people who are dumping our area. This is South Fulton. We want it to be beautiful. We do not want it to look like the slums. Thank you. Thank you.
Good night, Mayor Edwards, City Council. My name is Kevin Marquez. I'm a certified Georgia educator, and I spent the last eleven years teaching math in middle school in Fulton County and other public schools. I was coming to request to you all that we can come up with some kind of way to help the kids of middle school, up to high school kids, even elementary, get some kind of programs outside of the schools to help them be better prepared to move forward in math and reading because in the classroom, it's like, a lot of the kids don't get it, not the schools that they're going to, because the school's not really done what they're supposed to do to provide the kids with the quality of education that they're supposed to get. So, I just want to make a recommendation to try to work with you all to get something done like that to really help the kids as much as we can. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Avon Spence, Ms. Glenda Collins, and Ms. Pat Smith, if you'll please approach the podium.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Avon Spence, and I'm primarily concerned with the trash, and I do understand what Ms. Denise just said in regards to illegal dumping. Illegal dumping, for the most part, comes from people that do not have trash service. So, I do understand that you want to have something universal where everybody got trash. A lot of people don't have trash service because when they don't pay the bill, people such as myself, I'm a small hauler, and when people such as myself don't get paid, then we can't afford to pick it up. But I understand a lot of haulers don't want to have a universal service for whatever the reason may be. I'm not opposed to it. I am an only minority company, and I truly applaud the idea because it will give growth in my business. And I've been in business for almost eight years, in fact, over eight years, and I started the business by myself. Now, it's none of us, and for us, we have to go in competition with Waste Management, Waste Industries, and everybody else that are billion-dollar businesses. We can't afford to give everybody a new can. We don't give people, we give people sanitized cans. And sometimes, people don't put trash in cans, they put garbage because they don't use bags. But when people use trash, if they have a, for whatever reason, if they need to contact me, unlike most other haulers, everybody that have Fulton sanitation service have access to my personal cellphone number. I got one cellphone. I choose to be accessible. I give back to the community, all right? When I say I give back to the community, if the community do something for the youth as a whole, I will co-sponsor, all right? Whether it be basketball, or community picnic, or anything else, all right? I don't charge for special services for senior citizens and disabled people, all right? I ask that I don't get put out of business by the larger companies. Thank you.
Congresswoman Glenda Collins, Pat Smith, if you could come down.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Good evening.
Good evening.
My question is regarding the budget. I'd like to know if there's an itemized monthly listing of the salaries and the benefits for the employees, and will the budget, employee budget exceed the amount for the five months that has been allocated? Also, when will the first audit occur? And will the results be presented to the citizens of South Fulton for review? Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My husband and I are partially responsible for this group that are up here. We were in on the inception. Many nights were spent at my computer, printing out, making phone calls, making enemies of my neighbors. They still don't speak to me in the business because we were for this. And now, at this point, I am feeling a little bastardized, if you'll excuse the terminology. I am in a small pocket of Fulton County, of South Fulton County, the locklemen group that has not been determined where we're going to be. So, we don't vote anywhere. We have Atlanta garbage pails, but we have a bill before the court, and many of the naysayers say that will never happen, that we will remain Atlanta when the decision is made. But right now, we're in limbo. I am not allowed to, my children, my grandchildren are not allowed to apply for a position in this new county that I helped form because we're not considered part of City of South Fulton. I would like you to, yeah, that's what I heard. I'd like you to reconsider that. I thought when we had meetings prior to now, that we were going to try to use as many City of South Fulton people as we could. But I am understanding that I am not eligible to apply. I'd like consideration on that. Thank you.
The last two speakers are Bhuvani Daganbathan and Preston Pen Senior.
Hi, I'm the mayor, councilwoman, and woman. I want to speak on something that is very near to my heart, and that's homelessness. We have an issue in Fulton County with homelessness. I've housed probably just numerous of people, hundreds, for the past twenty years, of people that have been homeless on National Highway, at my church, various locations, and they don't have anywhere to go. And I just want to see if, you know, when you all are doing budgeting, planning, things of that nature, you all will consider some type of establishment that can be considered for a problem, a huge problem, that we do have in, on Old National Highway, like I said, and in the city of South Fulton, for our local city. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmembers, Preston Pen Senior, City 260 Thoroughwater Park. The reason why I'm here today is because of concern that we all see within our citizens, and we see my trucks, eighteen-wheelers are coming down our roads that are endangering our children, our residents, and tearing up our infrastructure. It's a shame when I see a police car behind an eighteen-wheeler truck and no lights going. There's ordinances saying they cannot come on these roads, but yet they do. They're going to continue to do that until we, as a city, you guys as a council members and the mayor, make sure that they enforce no truck traffic in our areas. I don't want to have to pay for roads that Fulton County just paid for. We need to make sure that that is taken care of, and I appreciate you. You guys are doing a great job.
Thanks.
Don't further speak. There was, uh... Two things on the ordinance is one, if I can hold, I want to make a comparison, did we hold it to the regular meeting or did we hold it to our next meeting?
If I just make an assessment of what I think the conversation was, the format of the resolution was not ready, and you all wanted some more tweaking, so my assumption was that it was for a future meeting.
That is something to watch. That it was for a future meeting?
Okay. I want to make that clear.
It was for a future meeting.
They held the planning commission for a future meeting, not the meeting after our work session. Okay, I want to make that clear.
One councilman, the lead, asked for that we held. Can you give a little bit more clarification on what the issue was? I know one of the things you talked about was, I believe, clarity and compensation. But can you, can you provide clarity?
I might have had the long copy of the document. I just have some questions, I'll, you know, both. It was mostly the compensation fees, the minimum time in meetings, and I don't have everything fronted right out because I thought it was holding until the next meeting.
So, with the clarification given in work session, are you comfortable with moving forward on the planning commission?
No.
And the, uh, the doctor ordinance governing the city council meeting, was that also held?
So, what actually happened, if you remember during the work session, you made a motion to move it to consent, and then you all rescinded that in order to add some additional modifications. The step that we left out was voting on approving it. We just gave direction about the amendments. For that particular one, you had three, you had three amendments you want to explain?
At the work session, there were three amendments. The first is, and they are all in Section 2 dash 2002, for subsection K, it would delete the first sentence. That would require an amendment to the division of the organizational ordinances to be provided a week in advance. It would just delete that sentence. The remaining provision of two sentences would remain. The city council decided to, or there was an amendment to strike subsection R regarding a council member vote for a legal opinion. And for subsection S regarding the hiring of department heads, there would, the language of the council vote was deleted as well for the amendment.
So, we're waiting for action, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Well, I entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, is this what we were striking section R?
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to strike section R.
Oh, so there are more than that? Okay. No, this thing does that, but there's more to it.
Okay. I thought that was it.
I make the motion that we amend ordinance 2017 dash zero zero three to strike the first line in section K to remove section R, and for section S, it picks up with the city, deletes the first part of that motion.
Second. Prompt to remove the second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. At this time, is that the only thing left out on the, on that agenda?
No, you have a room number eight, and this is for presentation because it's for first reading, under item 2017 dash zero one four. This is an adoption of an ordinance amending section three dash zero 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 one E of the City of South Fulton Code of Ordinances by revising the building code to include new requirements for classifying construction based on building height. Okay.
Mayor and City Council, this amendment is, as you were calling past on the consent agenda, there were building regulations, and one of those building regulations would require all apartment buildings to be of a steel frame. This would amend that section to have, to somewhat limit that, to have all apartment buildings with three stories or above, to, and it would require steel frames in that instances, in that, in those instances, and it will be consistent with other surrounding cities such as City of Sandy Springs and Dunwoody.
Okay. Any questions? At this time, Mr. Clerk, I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agreement.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agreement.
Second.
Prompt to remove the second, any discussion?
This thing that we just talked about is not on the...
No, this was first reading. All right. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. That passes. I can't hear you.
All right. The next item for your agenda is the board appointments, and you have a slate of nominations that have been made by various members of the city council. Mayor Edwards is nominating Mr. Harold Reed to the planning commission. Councilmember Willis is nominating Ms. Pamela Harkey. Councilmember Jackson is nominating Mr. Winston Cook, and Councilmember Gillyard is nominating Ms. Janay Walters. You want to take these all together or?
There's no objection with the taking them all together. That'd be fine.
Okay. Also, on the zoning board of appeals, Mayor Edwards is nominating Mr. Aaron V. Johnson. Councilmember Willis is nominating Mr. DeAndre Mathis, and Councilmember Gillyard is nominating Ms. Regina Ann Mincy. Councilmember Jackson is also replacing her, nominating Ms. Emma Dis Harris. On the board of code enforcement, Mayor Edwards is nominating Ms. Jennifer C. Thompson. Councilmember Willis is nominating Mr. Joseph Williams Thomas. Councilmember Gillyard is nominating Ms. Stacy L. Conyers, and Councilmember Jackson is nominating Ms. Mary Chris.
I entertain a motion to accept these nominations.
I would like to make a motion to accept nominations for the planning commission, zoning board of appeals, and board of code enforcement.
Second. Prompt to remove the second, any discussion?
No discussion.
Go ahead.
I did not see any information or resumes on any of these people in the package. Do you want us to have anything about these people in the package?
Yes, I forwarded all of my important information to the clerk.
To the clerk?
Yes, to the city clerk.
So, I do have all of those that have been received, and so at any time, because there's personal information with addresses and telephone numbers, you're welcome to review them. Thank you, Senator.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
That's majority passes.
Next item is a presentation, under the presentations and discussions, code enforcement pay-in class.
Okay, so code enforcement pay-in class, what you have in front of you is a listing of all of those employees who are currently employed with Fulton County that will be transitioning August first to the City of South Fulton. Were there any questions or discussions about what you have?
Uh, Mr. Clerk, do we have this slide for the audience?
It was the listing that's in your packet?
Yeah, I'm talking about that. Now, I'm going to ask again, I think I made this request before. Information like that, we have it, but the audience cannot see it, and we need to make sure that the audience has it or in their seat somewhere. So, I'm not concerned about us, I'm concerned about the people sitting out there who want to see what we're talking about. Go ahead.
What you have in your package is a list of the existing employees with Fulton County that will be transitioning August first. All of those employees, just as we did with the planning group, will transition with the existing compensation rate that they currently have. There will be no change in their compensation. We will be looking at the ranges and the classification codes for all of those positions and putting together a full pay-in class study for all positions once we've got all of those positions moved over. Any questions?
Any questions for HR?
Thank you. The next item is, two items actually, the group of plans for police chief and city manager and the hiring update have been moved to an executive session. So, under city manager's weekly update, you have one item, solid waste update.
Oh, no.
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 Are there the group of plans, you were supposed to talk about the methodology of doing it?
Yep.
Okay. We'll go back and forth, okay?
Go ahead.
That is in there.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, in the, in the packet as well, and that recommendation is, should be included in the documents. The decision was made to conduct a search for a city manager and also for the chief of police, and the recommendation to HR was made to make a recommendation for how we go about the methodology for filling that position. The recommendation from the Human Resources Department is that we use an external search firm to conduct a national search so that we can ensure that we get the most qualified candidates on a national basis to represent the city. We have an RFP that we've submitted to our legal department for review. We did not want to present that to the public without it being vetted by our legal department. The legal department has given us some feedback this afternoon that we will forward to you that we will forward to you for the next session.
Uh, the feedback that you're getting, you're waiting for us to, to say okay?
The decision is, should we conduct a search internally, or should we use an external search firm?
What I'm saying is, my concern is when can we vet it on our website so people can see it?
It should be able to go up on the website tomorrow morning. We've received it back from legal, and we'll be able to put the RFP up on the website.
Go ahead.
An approved RFP, not a draft.
Exactly.
You haven't seen it yet.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it would be amenable, because it is correct. You need to see the RFP, react to the RFP before the RFP is posted.
Right.
So we will give you, as Ms. Cooper mentioned, the RFP in the morning, and we'll give you a week to react to it. If, once we get your comments back, then we will bring it back and be ready on the twenty-fifth, which is our next meeting, to say, approve the approved RFP to place on the street.
Okay, that makes sense.
Also, will that RFP include cost analysis versus, you know, a local search versus national search? I think we asked for that before, so if you provide that information.
We can certainly include a cost analysis.
Thank you.
I mean, nobody. Alright, anything else for HR? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Clerk? Do we have anything else?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, there were only two major items listed under the manager's update. You have received the written document of the weekly activities of all of the departments, and of course, we will entertain any questions you have about that. However, for the viewing public, as well as for the council, we have an update on solid waste in the process and what we're doing. You gave us directives at the last meeting. So I would like to ask Mr. Michael Cuffey if he will come forward and give us an update on our next steps as it relates to solid waste.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Uh, the process related to the public meetings for solid waste and sanitation services will be executed in the following manner. Uh, one, tomorrow morning, Wednesday, July twelfth, twenty seventeen, an official notice of public meetings will be posted to our website. And the clerk will post the, the actual dates that I sent to you today. Also, the benefit of the arena here, we passed out the public notice, advance notice for tonight, but it will be posted tomorrow morning. Two, public meetings will be conducted in the following areas. Those areas were identified the last time as it relates to your wishes. So basically, South Fulton Art Center, Clifton Dell Community, that's at the four sixty-five Button Road. That's Thursday, July twentieth, twenty seventeen. Monday, July twenty-fourth, seventeen, Cedar Grove. Cedar Grove Community Center, Cedar Grove, that's seventy-three, seventy-five Rivertown Road, Fairland, Georgia. Uh, the third meeting will be held July twenty-seventh at Burdette Gymnasium, Old National, twenty-nine forty-five Burdette Road. And Monday, July thirty-first, at Wolf Creek Library, Sandtown area, for thirty-one hundred Enon Road. Uh, so that's where the public meetings will be held. Uh, the presenters for the public meeting will be staffed from the office of the city manager. The staff member will present a PowerPoint presentation relating to the important information contained in the draft RFP. At the end of the PowerPoint presentation, citizens will have time to give their verbal and written questions or statements in the time allotted. A special note, the PowerPoint will be given to the mayor and council on Friday, July fourteenth, twenty seventeen, for review and remarks and comments. Uh, once all the information is gathered at the public meetings related to the sanitation RFP, it will be synthesized and compiled in a report. This report will aid the city in updating the draft RFP with recommendations received. Once the updated RFP is completed, it will then be given to the council for the review and approval. Once the mayor and city council approves the RFP, it will be posted to our website under the bid section for thirty days, and the purchasing manager and finance department will handle the scoring process thereafter. Finally, the recommended contractor will be presented to the city council for approval.
Yes, I would like to recommend that we do a citywide survey with questions regarding the sanitation services once we get finished, once, after the public meetings. Thank you to my colleague, Kamalita Gomes, for putting out a survey. However, there were only three hundred and eighty-seven residents that responded to that survey. And of that three hundred and eighty-seven residents, only forty-four residents out of District Three responded to that resume, I mean, to that survey. So I would like for a citywide, if possible, citywide survey to be done. Uh, so to give people who cannot make the public meetings an opportunity to weigh in on how they feel about our sanitation RFP process.
Councilwoman Woods, we had, Mr. Cuffey had brought an example of a survey to me, and I thought it was unfair that we did the survey right on. But that we do the survey without hearing both sides of the story. And so, once the, once these meetings have been done, there's a survey waiting to be set up. Councilwoman Woods?
I just want to make sure that our small sanitation, for the small business person, that they're not left out. And there's room there for them.
Yes, ma'am, and the RFP solicitation, again, once the draft, the updated draft from the community meetings, uh, once you all have time to review it, you all have time to put those updates into the actual RFP as it relates to your wishes for minority businesswomen or small haulers and things of that nature. So again, this is only a draft that we're presenting. And then after the public meetings and the survey, uh, we will bring it back to you all to add the inclusion of your thoughts for the RFP.
Go ahead.
One of the things I asked about in our last meeting was whether our procurement manager would be on board to oversee this procurement.
The interviews have taken place for procurement, and so by the time we get the RFP ready and the solicitations back, we are hopeful that we will have someone on board.
Councilwoman Gomes?
Uh, first, I would like to thank everyone who participated in my initial survey of trying to get information from the residents, especially in my district. Um, so thank you all for participating in that. Is this the standard process that you all are going to start following for the RFP, or will the procurement manager come in and be able to do that? Because this seems, I don't have all the information, so I'm just trying to figure out.
I'm not understanding, what do you mean?
So I'm saying, as far as your process for the RFP, is this the process that we're going to go for public input? Is that?
This is the current process, in absence of the purchasing manager. Um, when the purchasing manager and finance department, they will codify the process. However, this process fits in normally with other similar situated cities that relates to public meetings, especially for sanitation.
Okay. And were you, who helped you with the process? Did you develop the process on your own?
Uh, no, myself, the actual city manager, and then we, again, we sought out, we did research and sought out.
Councilwoman Woods?
Yes, um, I concur, this is, this is in alignment with what the Fulton County process was. They did a comprehensive plan on sanitation, and they also went through this process prior to us becoming a city. I did request that information avoided over to our city manager team and also to the colleagues. But they hired a third-party firm to come in to a comprehensive study. They also did a survey, they also hosted public hearings, and they also went through the RFP process. But it was placed on hold because we decided to come see.
You know, something don't rise to this occasion.
Right.
And, uh, so what's going to happen is you'll find out that this will happen often, especially where, where a public input is truly needed, and where we have an expenditure that's going to affect their quality of life. So we do look for input from the community every time something like this occurs. Any further questions, please? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
That ends the city manager's update.
I don't think there's any new business in the government subject to this. So let's have the city council comments starting from my right. Wait, three minutes, please. Three minutes. Your right. My right. Alright.
I just, I just have two, three quick things. One, just, I want to say congratulations to all of us for getting our first loss check. I believe it was like one point eight million. Um, and it's going to be more if you all keep shopping in South Fulton. So to that, to that note, on my, in my newsletter and on my website, there's a shop South Fulton hashtag movement that we're trying to do to encourage people to shop on South Fulton. I hope you can check that out. Also, in the summertime, there are a lot of kids who do not, I want to thank the young woman who talked about homelessness there. A lot of people who do not get to eat. There are a lot of kids who do not get the meals that they would get if they were in school. So I wanted you to know that you can text this, you can text the word food to eight seven seven, eight seven seven. You know anyone who needs food, you can text the word food to eight seven seven, eight seven seven. It'll ask you for your zip code, and it will send you back places that are offering free breakfast and lunch. One of them is Burdette Gym. And then lastly, I wanted to let you know that, uh, as a former Black Lives Matter organizer, we are hosting a community conversation, uh, not this Friday, but next Friday, on our families gentrification and police violence, and what we can do as a city to ameliorate those things. It's based on a play by Kenny Leon's True Colors Theater, which opens tonight. It's a twenty fifteen Pulitzer Prize-winning play between Riverside and Crazy. Uh, so those tickets are on sale, there are previews right now, so they're super cheap, and it will be running through August. If you have any questions, you can visit kamalitacares.com to find out on the issue.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In District Four, last night was the first night that I was invited to the, but not invited, but made a presentation to the Cedar Grove Community Association, which is the association in my district. And it was a really, really good turnout. And before the meeting, I had talked to some of my constituents, and they were concerned that why are we borrowing money? I mean, during the campaign, people said that we had all of this money. So I thought it was really good to start out the meeting with, who were inaugurated, and this is day one, what did we have? And there was silence in the room. And it took people a while before someone said, nothing, and that was really true. And from there, you know, I sort of gave, um, a summary of most of the serious, not that other ones weren't, but most of the serious resolutions that we passed for the past seventy days. And so it was really, really a good turnout, and those meetings are going to occur monthly at their meeting. And the purpose of that is so that, um, it's another way for people to get informed about what's going on in the district and to get involved. Um, as I mentioned at our last meeting, um, there is a police advisory committee that is going to be developed, an environmental committee, an economic development committee, an education committee, and on, um, August the fifth, we are also having a back-to-school event, like so many other council people. And we need a lot, we need all kinds of donations, because I didn't really know this until I talked with some of the educators in District Four. There are a lot of kids at Renaissance Elementary, Renaissance Middle School, Langston Hughes High School. They get breakfast and lunch every day, and the food bank comes to all three schools at different times during the week, and I really didn't know that. So education is a real big deal, and a lot of help is really needed. Also, there will be a farmer's market on, um, August the twelfth and the thirteenth at Locust and Mill Park. And of course, Mr. Mohammed is one of the main organizers, and Ms. Ham is also one of the organizers for that event. And you're going to hear a lot more about initiatives like that. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, some of the things that are happening in District Two, like I said, I thank everyone that participated in the survey, it was three hundred and ninety-two responses. Um, I will continue to do things like that, um, especially if I am seeking your input. I continue to ask you to reach out to me if you have questions or concerns. But I think we got a good gauge for District Two. I will continue to ask questions, and if you feel like you need to have your concerns heard, please make sure that you reach out to me for District Two. There is a community open house that is happening, community conversations over at Wolf Creek. Um, they're having a family fun day, and that will be on July twenty-second. So if you want to come out and enjoy families on the Wolf Creek Library area, we greatly appreciate that. Also, too, um, Enon Church is having their hundred and forty-fifth anniversary. That's a big staple in our community. Um, they are having a series of events on, I think, the fourteenth. They're having a concert, um, so I do encourage you all to come out. And then also, too, on Sunday, please make sure that you attend if you live in District Two or wherever. Um, I think they would definitely appreciate it, come and support that church. Also, a public safety committee has been established for District Two. I know Ms. Wanda came up and was speaking about the fire range. I think we have kind of outgrown that fire range in District Two, so we are trying to make revisions. But we also would like to have more input from the community to serve on that public safety task force for District Two. So if you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to follow my website, my Facebook, or wherever else, if you want to give me your email address before we leave tonight, because I send out a newsletter bi-weekly. And that's all that I have today.
Couple quick updates for District One. On Wednesday, July twenty-sixth, from six to seven-thirty, I'll be having a town hall meeting and listening session for District One, but I encourage any resident of South Fulton, the City of South Fulton, to attend, because we'll be giving departmental updates. In addition, I will be attending the HOAs for Wind Creek and Madison Trace on this coming Saturday. Um, and lastly, but not least, I am seeking, I requested residents from District One, if you'd like to be considered for the planning, zoning appeal, or code enforcement board, please let me know. I am taking suggestions for community, and so I'll plan to bring those forth at our next meeting. But I did want to open that up in case people had an interest in serving. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for coming to our city council meeting this evening. I would like to congratulate all of the appointees to our District Three boards. And if you have not been appointed to any boards, there will be more boards that will be forthcoming. So if you're interested, interested in working in the community, please go ahead and forge your resume to me. Uh, you can get my email address from the City of South Fulton website. Uh, there will be, we are having a bookbag drive for the month of July. I am working with House Representative William Bodie, Councilmember Kamalita Gomes, and also Marvin Arrington. Uh, if you want to drop your bookbags off, stuff with school supplies to County Middle School, they are accepting bookbags with the school supplies from nine to three, Monday through Friday. Uh, we also are driving real hard at the celebrity basketball tournament that's going to be held at Welcome Mall Park on, uh, July twenty-ninth. Also, this is a, um... Also, there is a back-to-school event at Womack Mall Park that is being sponsored by the Atlanta Hawks, along with Atlanta Vision Care, on July 21, from noon until 4:00 p.m. They will be giving free eye exams and classes. So please make sure, if you have any children in a community that need eye exams and/or glasses, make sure they attend that event. I also want to, again, thank my council, my colleague, Cali DeGomes, for doing the survey in the community. I did receive 44 responses for District 3, and there will be a citywide survey forthcoming for sanitation. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, let me know. Reach out to me, call me, email me. And also, I will be doing a drive-along with the police in District 3. I will also be doing a drive-along with code enforcement at Public Works within the next couple of weeks with District 3. And I will be attending the G-Doc meeting tomorrow, so that we can talk about and strategize on ways that we can do things that may improve the safety on our streets, in our city of South Fulton and Park and Camp Reap Parkway. Thank you.
As always, thank you for coming out tonight. I would like to reemphasize the fact we're having a back-to-school jamboree on August the 5th, 2017, on Burdette Road. Our sponsors for this event will be our own Commissioner, Emma Darnell, of District 6, World Changers International, myself, Rosie Jackson, District 5, Councilman Khalid Kamu and District 6, and Councilman Mark Baker, District 7. We are coming together to do a new thing in District 5 and for the Old National Highway Corridor. I will also be riding with the Public Works on July 19, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. If anyone has any concerns in District 5 where you see the overgrown grass or anything, please let me know, so that I can make sure that we ride in those areas. Because I've been riding and looking, but I can't see everything. But I, your eyes are my eyes. And we will also have a District 5 Town Hall meeting on July 24 at Haightville Charter School, 6:30 p.m. Looking for everyone to come out. Those of you that are here, please let your neighbors know. They could come out and, I guess, just tell me whatever they need to tell you. Okay? And that's all. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to say thank you for so many District 7 faces in the audience. This is the most I think we've ever had, so it's really good to see you out here on today. Real quick, I spoke to HOA Stone Ridge, as well as Canton Valley, Reverend Lockhart, thanks for inviting me on last night. And if you would like to have me at your subdivision or your HOA meeting, please give me a call or contact me via the city email, markbaker, mark.baker@cityofsouthfultingga.gov. On August, Saturday, August 19, Khalid and I will be having our normal Future of South Fulton forums at 10:00 a.m. at the Flatshoes Library. Please mark your calendars back. Also, I am still accepting applications and submissions in reference to the board appointees. So please send me an email to that if you're still interested in the three boards. I'd like to report as well, 100% on our CNA midterms for all of the young people who receive scholarships for our CNA training currently. They have a couple more weeks to go, so keep them in your prayers and thoughts. Also, I have another program with the same organization for in-home nursing assistance. Please give a call if you need or you know someone who requires in-home nursing care, any of our elders check on them, give them this information. We're finding the money to fund this for them. So just give us a call. Also, real quick, my Brothers United camp, we had two weeks. It was a success. It ended last Friday. We took the kids to Stone Mountain, we did the Civil Rights Museum, we did radio, film, and it was amazing. This was the second year in a row. And thanks, Mr. Heigley, for coming out regarding CSX. And someone is, should be out tomorrow, according to my information, to survey the train area. And my newsletter, District 7, 2.5, will be available. If you don't have my, go to markbaker47.com, so I can have your email address if I don't already have it to receive my newsletter. And lastly, if you go to that Shell gas station on Old National and Biscay Road, when you see that number at the top for gas, just know that's only if you're paying cash. Because I, like, I've asked for the manager and the people that's responsible for it, and nobody is ever available. So I want you guys to know that that's not the amount that you're going to be paying. You're going to be paying at least 20 cents more, and it's going to catch you, because it's made me stop a couple times. So just be advised of that, and thank you guys for coming out.
I just finished my email. Can I say something? I just need to, please. Let me please recognize my appointees. Ms. Mary Chris for code enforcement, they are here tonight. Ms. Harris, I see her in the back, hiding in the back. And Mr. Winston Cook, he's in the front. I just thank you guys, because without you, I'm nothing. Thank you.
Okay, now we're not going to set that precedent anymore. But let me just say this first. Let me thank Commissioner Marvin Eric, who I met with on last Thursday. Had a long conversation, and has helped me to get a couple things done. And without his help, I could not have gotten done, but instead, I want to special thanks to Commissioner Eric for being an assistant. Representative Bodie, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
You've always been supportive, and we look to have a lot of conversation as we go in the future with you. Ladies and gentlemen, also, that my Fife family, you know, Fife, I've been around Fife for a long time. Some people don't know where Fife is, but I want to tell you, they make the best pot luck over there at church you ever want to see in your life. You got to, you got to go to Fife. I want to give a special thanks to the people and the employees of the city of South Fulton. It ain't easy, ladies and gentlemen, but they do a hell of a job. And they're to be commended, and I would have to give them a round of applause. And lastly, you know, my colleagues are always wonderful. We don't breed all the time, but we work it out. But also want to say to you, in the spirit of being transparent, we put as much stuff and information that we can give you. I just want you to understand that a lot of stuff that we put on the web that we're being transparent about, we have not voted on that stuff. And we put it out there to solicit your opinion about what we're doing. I find out sometimes that people misconstrue what we're doing as we've already done, okay? And lastly, this. Say something good about your city sometime.
Amen.
We're working too hard. You heard all this stuff that these guys are doing. We're working too hard to be abused all the time.
Absolutely.
I know we're going to be abused some of the time. And those of you who, I don't do, I don't read social media, but they send it to me. But those of you who read that stuff, listen. Just say something good. That's all I ask from everybody. Everybody in South Fulton ain't angry.
Amen.
The majority of them are probably, well, good.
Everybody's not angry.
So those of you who not angry, tell somebody. I'm not angry. And then I think we'd be better for all of us. Mr. Smith, I got somebody going to talk to you, because somebody that lied to you.
That's right.
Well, in other words, thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing you every time. We're going to have, we're going to break for a second session on personnel. No, you can't. She said a president, but I'm going to let you do it. But this is going to be a president. Go ahead, hurry up, you got a minute.
I would like to recognize Stacy Collier, who I appointed to the code enforcement group. Stacy.
All right, Stacy. All right, good. There's so much to do there. One more thing. What do you?
I want to recognize my appointee.
No. Anybody who was appointed to this. Anybody who was appointed, they stand up.
Harvey and Mr. Dozer.
That's right.
All right, good. Did we get all our party? Let's reset for second session on, what was it, personnel?
Personnel.
I made a motion.
Next session for personnel.